We'll go ahead and get started. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. First item is to discuss the formal agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda this evening? Any comments, questions? Okay, not seeing any. Then we'll move on to the topic of our work session, which is comprehensive plan update Oregon's kitchen table, public outreach. I see that we have Robin, Robin Teeter and Wendy Willis from Oregon's Kitchen, Oregon's Kitchen Table with us. And our community development director was here. There's, sorry, I didn't see Gail Hendrickson. I'll go ahead and, and then start with Gail. Our community development director to introduce our presenters.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. We have, at the request of the board, worked with Oregon's Kitchen Table for the past several months to conduct a series of in-person meetings, a virtual meeting, and to post an online survey. And the purpose of the work with Oregon's Kitchen Table was to gather input and direction, well, maybe not direction, but input from the community that we don't normally hear from. So we did live in-person events out in the Napa area, out in Jewell. We had a virtual event that was open to everyone. And then Oregon's Kitchen Table staff worked with Consejo Hispano and Clasip Community Action to obtain input from, in some cases, non-English speakers that we normally wouldn't hear from or get obtained input from. And the purpose, the three questions that we really focused on were questions that your board had related to housing, economic development, and how we can better improve our community outreach and public involvement. And so at this evening, we'll hear a high-level presentation from Robin and from Wendy about the events that were held and the results of the survey. And then you will be receiving a full, more detailed report on July 11th. So at that, this point, I will turn it over to Robin and Wendy. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Gail. And thanks to all of you for inviting Oregon's Kitchen Table into your county once again. And we had delightful conversations with county residents over the last couple of months. I'm Wendy Willis. I'm the Director of Oregon's Kitchen Table, which is a statewide community engagement program at Portland State. Robin Teeter is here with me. She was the project manager for this project, so she's going to weigh in whenever I say the wrong thing. So we're, so, so expect Robin to chirp in here. I am, let's see if I can share my slides. I can. So I'm just going to do a brief, a brief slideshow to just to give you some of the, you know, sort of to give you a teaser about what you can expect. As we, you know, as we move into a more complete and report, which will be July 11th, as Gail mentioned. So as, excitingly, there were more than 200 people who participated in the online questionnaire. And that was open until last week, Friday, and there are still a few paper surveys that are being inputted. So we don't have the exact numbers yet, which is one of the reasons why we're giving you an, and a sort of a high-level update. More than 50 people participated in the in-person meetings in Jewell and Napa. And then about 20 people attended virtual Zoom meeting, Zoom meetings. There were, we did a bunch of different outreach for folks who might not be reached through some of those other methods. So at county offices, we actually had a Spanish-speaking staff member of ours do phone interviews, walk people through the surveys on the telephone. So that, so that, you know, for folks who can't read in either English or Spanish, they could participate. And then we also did interviews and surveys at a vaccination clinic and a food bank. So a good number of people were able to participate in that way. And so everybody across the county, more than 10 communities were represented to varying degrees. There was, there were no huge gaps. It'll probably in the end, more than 15% of the, of the participants will be from our Spanish-speaking community members. And then interestingly, about a quarter of the people who respond, have responded are business owners or owners or managers. So the project team, myself and Robin, who you met, Baylen Vega, who I, is the person I just mentioned, who's a Spanish-speaking member of our staff, Sarah Giles, and Violet Rodmacher Willis. Gail, of course, and PJ and Monica were amazing. And we partnered with Consejo Hispano and Clasip Community Action, who were just amazing community partners, and we would relish the opportunity to work with them again. So again, high level, but this is, there was really, there's a, there's a sort of a story to be told that there's a strong agreement that the county should focus on making sure that people who work in Clasip County have a place to live. That also had a kind of sort of side, I guess, opinion about people being able to build more housing on their own property. And in the meetings, you'll see in the report that there was a lot of discussion about the trade-offs, about what that means, about to have more housing, what, what the effect is on infrastructure, what the effect is on, on sort of look and feel the county. But there was a, there's a, there's a real, there was a lot of storytelling about people who couldn't find appropriate housing and people, you know, people losing employees who were qualified and ready to work, but could, couldn't find a place to live. So that was like sort of a, that'll come back as a strong finding for you, I think. In terms of economic development, there was a lot of conversation about that. People were sort of evenly divided, I would say, between natural resources and healthcare, social work and teleworking. That was kind of a little triangle of things that people were interested in. Tourism, manufacturing and trade were evenly split, but much lower than the others. And I would say that, you know, in the conversations, I'm sure it would not be surprising to you to hear that tourism, some of the more problematic aspects of tourism was talked about a lot during some of those community conversations and short-term rentals being one of the big parts of those. One thing that I know that you all were interested in, community involvement, how people wanted to communicate with you all about the subjects like the COT plan that are really, really important in the community. And this is one of the places where we really saw a difference between English-speaking participants and Spanish-speaking participants. And in general, of course, people want diverse ways to communicate with, with, with you all and with, with the county in general. Like people want to have multiple pathways to converse with you. But I would, but, but there are, there is a distinction between some of the places where English-speaking participants and Spanish-speaking participants noted. English-speaking participants really like online surveys and sort of more traditional town hall meetings. And Spanish-speaking participants talked more about, you know, reaching out at existing community events and translation was really important. And, and use of social media on places where, where people gather together. So that's, that's sort of the high-level story that we have to tell you. And the final report will be available on July 11th. There'll be places where there is a distinction, cross tabs will be available to you. So you can say, oh, people in one community differ from another community, people who are from, from, you know, one identity group will differ, differ from another. So you'll have a chance to take a look at that. And then you'll get a much more sort of rich look at what people said during these in-person meetings. And, you know, I'll just to, as a witness to these in-person meetings, I'll tell you that people really showed up, got involved, offered their opinions, listened to each other and, and sort of deliberated with one another. And I know that a couple of commissioners were there. So we really appreciated that. So that is the high level overview. I'm happy to take any questions, of course, and, and just listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. I see the Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Well, this was a lovely time to come and see what was going on in Jewell. And I had occasion to go back to the Jewell School Board meeting. Because when people came to the community meeting, they said, oh yeah, we want more business here. But when we look for who can be the community anchor institution for the broadband project to make it possible, you remember, we said, yes, let's go forward. Let's give them money. Let's, and the Jewell School Administration at that time said, yes, and now they're not so sure they're able to do it. And when I talked to them about, you know, you could, you could be the life force of new economic development and more housing, and they just didn't look enthusiastic about that. So I would say that's one thing that we may see the need, but we may have a gap between what community entities and organizations are currently able to do to support the desires that OKT elicited, which I think are valid. But there's, there's a gap that I see that I think we're going to have to continue to engage with. That's number one. And I'll wait. Well, all right, I'll say, I talked with Katie Jacobson, Lincoln County Chair, who also sits on DLCD. She said DLCD is looking at ways to encourage community participation. They're looking at paying for not only translators, but also transportation and childcare. So I thought we might take note of that and consider if that's a way that we can support people who want to come. Because if you look at the, at the non-English speaking community, one reason they may want to come to community events is because their kids can come with them. And if we offered support for other options, we might, we might see something different. So I just wanted to add those two points. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks.
I just want to say what a wonderful job Rob, Robin Teeter did facilitating the meeting in Napa. She could be a cat herder or some, a wrangler or something. She was able to keep folks on track, which was an extremely difficult job to do. When given such a large forum and such a diverse group of people. And I was just thoroughly impressed that she kept driving us to the goal. And I was very come, I've, I've become very confident and comfortable with Oregon Kitchen's Table processes and, and survey information and data gathering that they will end up providing for us just by witnessing that amazing feat. So I, I would say you probably have a lot of experience because it all showed and I was impressed. So thank you so much.
I thank you kindly for that, Commissioner Banks. That's very nice of you to say. It was nice to have you there. Thank you for spending your evening, right, and giving up your, your free time to be there with us. And I have to say that really working alongside Gail and Monica and PJ and that staff team, helping us sort of put together the agenda and what was going to flow correctly for the evening was invaluable. So that partnership was really in evidence for us and is what made the evening successful. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Thompson.
I would just echo the praise. Pardon me. I wanted to get my two points out there before they flew out of my brain. No. This, this was a really, they fed people, they watered people, they welcomed people. I can't even count the number of times you said welcome. And you didn't just say welcome, you acted welcoming and, and your staff. It was really a very lovely community event. Well done.
Thank you. We were so, it was, we were so happy to be there. So thanks for, for sharing that.
Any other comments, questions from the commission? Well, this sounds encouraging. It sounds like the type of outreach and input that we were looking for. We'll have a presentation then in, in greater depth on July 11th. Is that correct? Is that the right date?
The, the report will be available to your staff on July 11th. And then, you know, how it gets communicated to you, I'm not sure is, has been identified yet, but I know you have some hearings coming up for the public. So at some point before then, surely you will have that full report.
Okay. I mean, we can give you, we can give you the report and you can have it. And, or if you have questions about it, we're happy to come back and talk with you about it. So it's, it's, at this point, it will do whatever you need to do to sort of be able to digest it.
Okay. Yeah, terrific. I know we do have a meeting on the 13th.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take Gail's signal as, as to whether coming in and, and doing the full report would be helpful to you.
As, as always, we'll take our, our.
As always.
Well, again, well, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. And we will look forward to that next phase, next step.
Thanks again for the opportunity to work alongside you.
Yep.
And I'll look forward to what comes next.
Hey, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
And feel free, if you have questions, to reach out to one of us. We're happy to talk to you at any point. So thank you so much. Pleasure to be with you all and with all the, your community members.
Yeah, thank you very much. Fantastic. Looks like we don't have any other items on the work session agenda, correct? So we will go ahead and adjourn until our regular scheduled meeting at six o'clock. So I'll see you guys in about 44 minutes. And start recording. Welcome, everybody, to the regular session of the Clasip County Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners as the governing body of Clasip County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, is now meeting in regular session. Clerk of the Board, can we have the roll call, please?
Chair Quila.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
I'm here.
Commissioner Toyoka.
Here.
Commissioner Webb.
Here.
Commissioner Banks.
Here.
Thank you, Clerk of the Board. First item is the agenda approval. We had an opportunity to review the agenda during our work session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the agenda as it, as it stands with item 17, Childcare Advisory Group added.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor, signify with an eye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is the proclamation for PTSD Awareness Day. And with us this evening is Lieutenant Matt Armstrong, who's the peer support team coordinator for Clasip County Sheriff's Office. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Lieutenant Armstrong.
Good evening, all. Thank you very much. Make sure everybody can hear me before I get partway through this thing. Okay. All right. So just a little bit of statistics here. According to the National Center for PTSD, experiencing or witnessing any life-threatening event can cause someone to develop post-traumatic stress disorder, disorder, also known as PTSD. These types of traumatic events may include combat and other military experiences, sexual or physical assault in adult or childhood, learning about the violent or accidental death or injury of a loved one, serious accidents like a car wreck, and natural disasters. The PTSD Foundation of America estimates 7.8% of Americans will experience PTSD at some point in their lives and about 3.6% of US adults aged 18 to 54, which is made up of 5.2 million people, have PTSD during a given year. Each year on June 27, PTSD Awareness Day is nationally recognized as a day to raise awareness about PTSD and support efforts to eliminate the stigma around seeking help. PTSD is not a period at the end of a sentence, but rather a comma. There is hope for those who experience PTSD, and it is possible to move forward and have a full and happy life. If you yourself experience PTSD or struggling with mental health crisis, you are not alone. You have a community that cares and will answer when you call for help. It is up to all of us as a community, community to answer the call. Some of our local resources that are available are Clasip Behavioral Health Care, the Veterans Crisis Line, Lines for Life, and the National Suicide Prevention Hotline, which will be opening on July 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Armstrong. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution in order proclaiming June 27, 2022 as PTSD Awareness Day and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the resolution in order proclaiming June 27, 2022 as PTSD Awareness Day and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor, signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming June 27, 2022 to be PTSD Awareness Day. Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder can occur after a person experiences trauma, including but not limited to the stress of combat, rape, sexual assault, child abuse, bombings, accidents, and natural disasters, and affects approximately 8 million adults in the United States annually. And whereas PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. And whereas combat-related PTSD stress is among those in the armed forces is significantly, significantly pronounced, given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. And whereas between 10 and 30% of service members will develop PTSD within a year of leaving combat, while others may not develop symptoms until years later. And whereas despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to a lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. And whereas raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that may save their lives. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clasip County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 27, 2022 as PTSD Awareness Day in Clasip County, and calls upon all community members and local agencies to raise awareness in an effort to remove the stigma associated with PTSD, encourage treatment, and offer support dated this 27th day of June 2022, the Clasip County Board of Commissioners. Next item is the business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except for public hearings. And we do have a public hearing on the agenda this evening. Or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt a consent calendar as presented.
Second. Move second to adopt the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go on to Commissioner Liaison Report, starting with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was delighted to I packet songs for the commissioners because we, we honored, we honored music-making in Clasip County last time. And so I appreciate the effort to bring joy and song to our midst. That's always helpful. Secondly, I attended the Eastern Oregon Women's Economic Summit in Hermiston last week that was preceded by the AOC Legislative Committee meeting that lasted for a whole day. So it was three days in beautiful Hermiston. I have a lot of information. If anybody's interested, I have, I have inches of information. My takeaway from the almost dozen legislators that were present was a remark made by Senator Hansel. You may be my opponent in some legislation. You will never be my enemy. And so as we move forward to do land use planning particularly, I'd hope we could keep that admonition present. We can be those who have opposing points of view, differing points of view, but to never become enemies. I think that's extremely important. On a more mundane level, I participated in the bylaws review of the State Emergency Response Commission this morning. So I've been vice chair of that body, and we're looking at how to operate more effectively all across Oregon now that the state fire marshal is an independent, or as soon to be, an independent state agency standing on its own under the governor. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks.
I'm Northwest Senior and Disability Services. We successfully passed our budget for the upcoming year. I've participated in a variety of meetings over the last couple of weeks, but none other than that budget has really stuck out to me. I was able to participate in the water conversation with Commissioner Thompson yesterday, yesterday, I think it was. And, and so things look good moving forward. And also just very excited for the childcare presentation later this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb.
Yes, I too rejoiced in our day of, of making music yesterday. I attended the ukulele concert at 10:15 that was an awful lot of fun. And it gave me great, great pleasure to be able to sit there and listen to people in the audience even brought their ukuleles and sing some old wonderful, they, they knew who their generational attendees were going to be because I knew the words to most of the songs. So obviously it was, it was targeted. It was great fun. And of course, it happened all over the county. And, and I think it was, it was just very exciting to be able to have a day that, that was, that was that wonderful. Almost as wonderful as the opening of the Nordic Heritage Park, which is a beautiful, beautiful memorial, I think, more than a park. But, and a celebration of our Nordic heritage in Clasip County. It's a beautiful park. It's not very big, but it's beautiful. And there's so much fun in it and good information. And, and it was, it was, it's a real tribute, which of course was immediately followed by the Scandinavian Festival over the weekend, which is always one of my favorite events. And it was, it's great fun. It was, it, I think it's, you know, it's been what, at least two years, maybe three since we had our last one. And it's always fun to go out to the fairgrounds and see the, the mock Viking jousts and, and the food and the music and the dancing. I think it's one of our great events here. And it was, it's, it's, it's really, really, really been wonderful. The, the Northwest Oregon Workforce Board is meeting here this Friday. And I know I promised to send you all invitations to it, but I think the agenda is, is such that there not going to be a whole lot of decisions made. A lot of it's going to be program presentations. And but, so if anybody is interested, it's, it's Friday morning from 10 to 12. And let me know if, if, if you'd like, it's going to be at the college. So it's in Patriot Hall, which always make, well, it's, yeah, it's in a room in Patriot Hall. Um, we had a very successful opening for Trillium House and construction is well underway. And we're pretty excited about it. The ongoing attention that we've had to pay to Owens Adair after their elevator got basically hit, hit with, not by lightning, but by an electrical outage has been very challenging. And I'd like to give a shout out to CCA, who has been, as always, a wonderful local partner for us. And they just rolled up their sleeves and they came into the building and literally knocked on every door, offering, offering information, offering all kinds of services, shopping for people, deliveries, et cetera. And finally, I coaxed the interim executive into hiring someone who could be there for several hours every single day to help people navigate the stairs and also carry things like their laundry down to the basement laundry room and deliveries and, and things like that. So they seem that the tenants seem to be happy. I wouldn't say happy, but, but they are content with the services that, that we've been able to provide them with our community partners. So I really give a shout out to Viviana Matthews, who's always a wonderful partner for us locally. I think, um, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Toyoka. Good evening, everyone. Hey, um, just, excuse me for a second.
Just excuse me for a second. My daughter wants to give her report first. One of the not as celebration time, but we had a different celebration, a celebration of life down in Seaside. The middle school, high school band director Kyle Rieger was was killed in an accident. Big takeaways are, you know, we're a small community. And he affected a lot of lives. He touched a lot of students, you know, and in a short time he was here, had a great impact. And the biggest takeaway is in our small community, how people band together. And there was such an outpouring, not only for the Rieger family, but for the other students. You saw the parents, faculty, community members come together, you know, and grieve for not only Kyle Rieger, but support for the students. And that's why we live in rural America. That's why we live in small towns. I doubt we'll see that in the big cities. In our small town, that's the beauty of it, that we are intertwined, and we have that compassion in our small towns. So tragic loss, but you know, it just shows the strength of our community. Different note, I guess PTSD transition, huh? I was thankful for that, the awareness, you know, the proclamation today, now that I can tell, but I wear the support of my fellow members. I've got some other Baha'ala stuff, you know, but I'm old enough to, you know, we came back from overseas. There was nothing. It was, you know, I was a Marine too, so it was, you know, rub some dirt in it and get back in the fight. And I am so glad to see nowadays that there are alternatives and places for people to go talk to. You know, we have that very high suicide rate, do it divorce rate. There's a lot of complications and things that happened, you know, when your life is forever changed. And, you know, I have a lot of friends who came home, but they were never really home. And so with proclamations like this and services that are available nowadays, it's it's wonderful to see that someone can find something and work their way home. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. You can minimize or understate the service and the stress that comes with serving. And thank you both to you, Commissioner Toyoka, and to County Manager Boone for your service to our country. I would also echo what Commissioner Webb said about the opening of the Nordic Park on Friday. I don't I was amazed at the attendance and the attendance at the Scandinavian Festival as well. It was a fantastic turnout for the entire weekend, and it was great to see so many people. That was a culmination of a lot of of work from from many people that have been fundraising for that park for for several years. And and I know that they were just so proud to be able to to have to give that dedication on Friday and to see so many people embrace it and enjoy walking through the park there. So that was fantastic. I'm going to be attending the Columbia River Estuary Study Cast Force Budget Meeting tomorrow. So we will hopefully be approving the budget for Crest and will be coming back and reporting on that at the next meeting. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our county manager for county manager report.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the board. I just want to, it was an, there was an item on your consent agenda that I just wanted to just acknowledge real quick, and that's the work that Gail Hendrickson did on the Community Development Work Plan. This is an extension of the strategic plan. It's really a way for the development, community development staff to focus on board priorities as well as to assist staff in in resource and budget planning. And so I just want to thank her for planning with her department into linking it to the strategic plan and then putting together a document that can really inform the the public about the priorities of the department. So kudos to Gail and her staff. The only other thing that I will add is that I will be out of the office next week, and I will be returning right after the fourth. So thank you for your support on that.
Thank you, County Manager. We'll move on to our next item, which is a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance twenty-two dash zero five, short-term rental revisions, law duck, page one eighty-seven of our agenda. And at first, we will have the staff report, and I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Gail Hendrickson. Gail.
Thank you, Chair and Board. I have just a very brief presentation this evening. This is the second public hearing for ordinance twenty-two dash zero five. The reason that we're looking at this ordinance this evening is because back in two thousand and eighteen, we adopted operating standards for short-term rentals that are outside of the Arch Cape area, but we didn't amend our zoning code at that time to identify where short-term rentals should be allowed. And so ordinance twenty-two oh five proposes to add short-term rentals as a type-one use to sixteen different zones. And those are listed on the right-hand side of your screen. These would be listed as a type-one use, so that would not require public hearing or public notice prior to issuing a permit. And I did want to point out to the board and to the members of the public that the proposed amendments do not include resource zones. That would include our exclusive farm use zone, our forestry eighty, and our agriculture forestry zone. And the reason for that is that under state statute, short-term rentals are not permitted in resource zones. And so correspondingly, our code cannot allow them. The other area that would be affected by ordinance twenty-two oh five would be the urban growth boundary of Gerhart. And typically, our rules do not apply within incorporated areas or within urban growth boundaries. But the unincorporated urban growth boundary of Gerhart kind of falls into a no man's land where there there being the city of Gerhart's short-term rental rules don't apply to the urban growth boundary. So our code is picking them up. And so our operating standards that were recently amended would continue to apply for short-term rentals in the urban growth boundary of Gerhart as well. I wanted to talk just briefly about the work that your board has done to date and the ordinances that you've passed and the actions that you've taken. So back in April of this year, you had three different items on your agenda. One was ordinance twenty-two oh one, which transferred the operating standards for short-term rentals in Arch Cape out of our zoning code and into our county code of regulations. You also adopted ordinance twenty-two oh three, which updated the Clatsop County Code to update our operating standards for short-term rentals that are outside of Arch Cape. And then you also approved a resolution and order that extended the current moratorium on the issuance of new licenses through August twenty-sixth of this year. And then I also wanted to point out that even though we're at our second public hearing for ordinance twenty-two oh five tonight to look at those zoning districts, that depending on the direction your board wants to take, that there are additional options that are available to you in case you want to do more work in addressing the issue of short-term rentals. And I know that one of the things that we've heard repeatedly in our public comments have been the encouraged use of limitation or caps to help address some of the neighborhood livability issues. Those limitations or caps aren't included in this ordinance this evening, but you could address them in a future ordinance. And the way that we would do that would be to amend our operating standards in the Clatsop County Code. And we anticipate a staff at the timeframe to complete this would be approximately six months. And most likely, that would require your board to extend the moratorium in some or all parts of the unincorporated areas to work through those issues. Our recommendation to you this evening is that you conduct the second public hearing and accept public testimony for ordinance twenty-two oh five, and that you approve the ordinance and conduct the second reading by title only. We would also request if your board is interested that you provide us additional direction regarding the possibility of limitations and caps. And if your board wants to move forward with additional work on that, then what staff would do is research how other communities are handling and implementing the issue of caps on short-term rentals. We would work to identify areas within unincorporated county where such limitations might be appropriate, develop some draft thresholds that would could be included in the Clatsop County Code that you could have an initial review of. And then if needed, we could prepare a moratorium extension if you wanted to move forward with any additional work. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, before we open up the public hearing, we can answer some questions of the commissioners, and let's limit it to questions only. So I'll go ahead and identify Commissioner Banks.
Quick question in regards to extension of the moratorium. Do we have to extend the moratorium in order to explore limits or caps?
You do not. There's not a mandatory requirement for it. What extension of the moratorium could accomplish would be not allowing additional rental units to come in before you establish a threshold, if that's the route that you wanted, your board wanted to go. That would be the primary reason to extend it.
Okay, because I'm just thinking about constituents in my particular area who have already come forward to the board and expressed concern regarding the moratorium itself. So, thank you.
And Commissioner Banks, just to also clarify, the board could choose to extend a moratorium in certain parts of the county, but it would not necessarily have to apply to all parts of unincorporated county.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Commissioner Toyoka.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Can we also at the at that time talk about or amend anything about code compliance? The, you know, permit terms, consequences for non-compliance, you know, fee schedules, could that be also discussed? Because they, one of the main concerns of the community, especially in those emails, has been code compliance and the livability. So can that be addressed after that fact as well?
Yes. So your board did adopt in April ordinance twenty-two oh three, which did some of those amendments already. So we dropped our permit length from five years to two years. We added additional clarification about how the code compliance process works, and we prohibited transfers of short-term rental permits. But certainly, we can go back if there's additional items that your board would like to review again to see if additional revisions are needed. We could do that as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Did Commissioner Thompson and then Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. I'm wondering about a fiscal impact statement for this additional work. We've spent a lot of time, energy, staff time. I don't know if it's possible to capture what what we've already spent, but all of this effort has a cost, and I'd like a fiscal impact statement that that may not be possible, but I'd just like to raise that issue. I'd also like to include the idea that that Well, let me just ask another question. The Gerhart UGB, that area, is that essentially the area of Surf Pines? Do I recall that correctly?
Actually, that's the Highlands area primarily.
That's the Highlands, so that isn't Surf Pines. So Surf Pines is included within Gerhart. Is that accurate?
No, that's an unincorporated county and its own coastal beach residential.
Okay, but there is an HOA there.
Correct.
So if you bring us information, I'm interested in that HOA thing and how that impacts it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks.
A couple of questions, one being, are you looking for direction now or after the hearing in regards to caps and limitations from the board?
I think that's at your discretion. My initial thought was after the public hearings.
Okay.
Let's have, let's have the public hearing first. I think this is for clarifying questions from the commission, and then we will move on to the public hearing.
One, one question that I have as we're further exploring this is that it's transparency to future purchasers or future land, landowners. I would really, an exploration or potential exploration that we we seek information regarding informing property, potential property owners of either the limitations on the property that they're purchasing so that they are aware and going in with eyes wide open in potential property purchases. I know that it is that way in other municipalities and other states, that there is a disclosure of you cannot use this property as a short-term rental or a rental for less than three months, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just hoping that in this exploration, is is it possible to to figure out a way to be abundantly transparent with people who are moving in or purchasing property with Clatsop County?
I see County Council was joining us as well. County Council, do you have any response?
I certainly think that can be part of the research that we do and some of the considerations that staff can bring you on board. Yes.
Thank you, County Council. Do we have any other questions, clarifying questions before we start the public comment portion of our public hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing any. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Yes, there are.
Okay. You'll have two minutes to speak, and you'll have your name called. Please give your name and address for the record when you are called. And then you'll have your two minutes. Clerk of the Board, who's first?
Amber Geiger.
Amber?
Hi, thank you. Amber Geiger Morgan, seven eight nine five three Cove Beach Road. Board of Commissioners, first of all, thank you for your endurance these last few years. It's been a long journey, and I think we can all say we're very tired. We all have different reasons for being pro or against the ordinance, and I know it must be a lot to juggle everyone's concerns and come to a conclusion that is best for all. So thank you for your energy and your time on this matter. My small family of three has lived in Falcon Cove, Cove Beach for over twelve years, and we've been visiting for many years before that. It's been truly heartbreaking to see our community become so divided. What was once a restorative place that my family dreamed of spending every weekend at and long weeks during the summer is now a place we only occasionally go to these last few years, preferring places that bring us joy. When we visit our home now, we really have to work hard to see the good and remember how much peace and happiness it used to bring us and keep our focus on all the good rather than the division and unkindness that has transpired in our community specifically around this issue. In many ways, Cove Beach has become a microcosm of what is wrong with the world. Division, unkindness, misuse of power by very few people. As a governing body, you commissioners may be the only way to keep those who wish to continue in this way in check. The community needs you, and we want to thank you for being here. My family appreciates you. Our family is in support of ordinance twenty-two dash oh five. I've said it many times before that we are deeply concerned that the SDR discussion these last two years have come from a place of exclusion, taking rights away from property owners that are not full-time, taking away access for the greater Oregon population, i.e. short-term vacation renters, and prioritizing the very few who can afford to own property along the Oregon coast. The exclusion has become so second nature now that I've even heard a full-time resident that I truly love explain joyfully that she thinks the stairs being removed at the Columbia Street entrance would mean less people visiting our beach. We must ask ourselves, do we live in a gated community? No. Did the visionary Governor Oswald West want just a few people from Oregon's population to have the exclusive use of Cove Beach? No. Did he want to keep Oregon's beaches accessible to all, not just the privileged few? Yes. As a Clatsop County taxpayer, SDR owner, and Cove Beach community member, I request the commissioners deeply consider policies that nourish a culture of excluding people just because they don't have the ability to live here full-time or afford a week-long stay. Please consider how your decision on this ordinance will impact access for all Oregonians. Prioritizing a small number of full-time residents nuisance complaints versus keeping the Oregon coast accessible to all of the state's inhabitants is by very nature exclusion.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Geiger. I think we were over time there. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board?
Carol Skyes.
Charles?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ice thirty-one nine eleven Clatsop Lane, Cove Beach. Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to ask each of the Commissioners to please explain honestly and clearly exactly why it is they support ordinance twenty-two oh five and why they believe that this ordinance is in the best and why they believe that this ordinance is in the best interest of the residents and voters of Clatsop County. To those of us who actually live in Clatsop County, this makes no rational sense. The residents of the county have sent in over 1,700 emails and letters to the county commissioner's office in opposition to STRs in residential neighborhoods and have submitted hours of testimony pointing out the harm caused by STRs in residential neighborhoods to public health, safety and quality of life. Also, the fact that almost every single town, city and county along the Oregon coast has listened to their citizens in residential neighborhoods and has enacted ordinances to prohibit or restrict STRs in residential neighborhoods, including Astoria, Warrington, Gearheart, Seaside, Cannonbees, Lincoln County and many, many more. So why are the commissioners ignoring their own citizens for the benefit of out-of-area STR owners and investors who do not live in the county? And many of whom do not live in the state. Are there some sort of undisclosed financial interests that are causing the commissioners to vote for 2205? Is it really because they truly believe that the out-of-state business owners and investors are, you know, more worthy or need more benefits than the citizens who actually live in the community and in the neighborhoods? Or is it just a question of money? The, you know, alleged, you know, $500,000 or so of transient occupancy tax? You know, is it just a question of money? We really request that the commissioners explain this in some detail so, so we can understand what's, what's going on and what's behind your decision. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Dice. Clerk of the Board?
Yeah, Beth Radedge.
Beth? Beth Radedge?
Okay, Jonathan Felix Lund.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks, sorry, I'm a little under the weather. Thanks for the time to speak. I was struggling with what to say because I feel like we've done this so many times, I've said so many pieces, but I think the items I wanted to highlight.
Can you put your name and address for the record? You'll have two minutes.
Sure, it's Jonathan Felix Lund and hold on one second. I always get my numbers mixed up here. Is there any way you can come back to me?
Sure.
Sure.
Next speaker is John Meyer.
John?
Yes, good evening and I am, we have a house at 31865 Clatsop Lane in Cove Beach. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Guido Paparoni and Margaret Rosendahl, property owners in Cove Beach who cannot be here today because of travel conflicts. What follows are excerpts from a letter that Mr. Paparoni would like to have read for the record. Dear Commissioners, I write to you from the perspective of access to opportunity, property rights and the future for Oregonians that follow us. My wife and I grew up in different parts of the world. My wife calls Washington and Oregon her home. I grew up overseas. We experienced firsthand how others live and how lucky we are to enjoy stability, freedom and access to a means of earning a living. In 2017, after visiting Cove Beach multiple times, thanks to the accessibility given by STRs, we decided to use our hard-earned savings to purchase land and build our retirement home. We wanted to call Oregon our home. Little did we know that the beauty of this place also held a deep sense of entitlement, that is, of entering and closing the door behind you. This is because the same minority that has consumed our time on the STR issue made it so that we could not develop our land. We now know this was also done to stop new STRs from being built. To add insult to injury, the water well used to slow down development is still not being used a year and a half after being approved for service. If you consult the state records on the E. coli event we just experienced, you will find proof that the well is still not in service. Keep the Oregon coast accessible so our children and grandchildren may enjoy what others have fought so hard to put in place. Keep Oregon open to all, respectfully yours, Guido Paparoni. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Meyer. Clerk of the Board?
Rick Smith.
Mr. Smith?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rick Smith. I live at 79165 Ray Brown Road in Cove Beach, which is the Archcade mailing address. Our home is in Cove Beach and this is our primary residence. I want to thank you for allowing me to provide my views in this public hearing regarding ordinance 2205. I appreciate Commissioner Bev's recommendation that the ordinance as written does not go far enough to represent the local residents and I applaud her vote against the ordinance as written at the last public hearing. The county has acknowledged that you made a mistake by allowing commercial businesses in CR zones and now you're using this ordinance as an excuse to make sweeping changes against the comprehensive plan to allow STRs in 16 residential zones across the county. I'm disappointed that the following is still not being addressed in the ordinance. There needs to be a cap of at least 15% on the number of STRs in each zone. Throughout Oregon and the rest of the country, communities have caps on the number of STRs to provide a balance between the residential homes and the STR transients. Otherwise, it'll be a wild, wild west when it comes to more STRs taking over residential neighborhoods, pushing those of us that have made Clatsop County our primary residence. There won't be any other place to go. I plead with the Board of Commissioners to extend the moratorium, to finish the research and add a cap to the ordinance while this ordinance is still being considered so that there aren't further delays. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Smith. Clerk of the Board?
Denise and Jeff Davis.
Okay, Denise Davis, Jeff Davis.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Jeff and Denise Davis, 79432 Ray Brown Road. Commissioners, most of you have indicated clear intent in passing ordinance 2205 despite so much evidence pointing to the devastating effects STRs can have on residential neighborhoods, especially
Yeah, Ms. Davis, I think you're cutting out. You didn't We're having audio difficulties. Yeah, I'm sorry Ms. Davis, we might have to come back. Your audio is cutting out. We couldn't hear you.
Okay, Nancy Chase.
Thank you, 79089 Tide Road is my house in Cove Beach. And I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I've been kind of overwhelmed with all the meetings and wondering how much to get involved or not. But in stepping back, I really realized that you've done a great, I think, a problem-solving approach to this issue. Enacting a moratorium to keep things static while you studied the issues, adopting revised regulations and especially a proactive good neighbor policy, I thought was particularly good. And to answer Mr. Dice's question, I think we're here tonight to protect, in my view, property rights. I've had my short-term rental for 30 years, long before Mr. Dice built his home here, long before Beth Radedge bought her house and many other short-term, excuse me, full-time residents who should have been aware that this was a part-time community. I would ask that you give time tonight to consider giving a year or two to see how the good neighbor policy and the new regulations work out. And it probably won't help the situation in Cove Beach, but I would like you to take that time and see if that's cured the problem for most of the other county. And then if you do study caps, I would hope, we have 17 short-term rentals in Cove Beach. Two of them are being used by full-time residents, not creating any revenue. And I just fear that if there's a cap, that will be common for full-time residents to apply for short-term rental permits just to get around those regulations. I'd also like to have it fact-checked whether investors are really buying homes and turning them into STRs. It just seems financially not possible. But in closing, I just want to thank you for the time, your time in doing this and hopefully you can spend your time on other important issues from now on. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Chase. Clerk of the Board?
Adam Smith.
Mr. Smith? Adam Smith?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Adam Smith. I live at 78978 Cove Beach Road. I just want to say we've lived here for almost two years as a full-time resident and every house that we have seen purchased during the two years we've lived here has been converted into a short-term rental in Cove Beach. I have not met anyone who actually lives here, who's here full-time, who thinks it's a good idea to let sort of unregulated hotel culture happen, you know, and take over the community. And it feels like, you know, ignoring the study that was done in 2019 and voting yes on this is really serving the needs and desires of speculators who don't live here versus community residents who actually live here and want to make this place their home. I would strongly urge you to put a limit on short-term rentals before, you know, zoning the residential zone here becomes entirely meaningless. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Smith. Clerk of the Board?
Karen Fish.
Karen?
Hi, my name is Karen Fish. For the record, I live at 7978 Cove Beach Road in Falcon Cove. I want to thank Chuck Wheeler, Commissioners, for the opportunity to share my testimony tonight. I urge you to vote no on ordinance 2205. I appreciate Commissioner Webb's willingness to ask tough questions and listen to the concerns of people who live here in Clatsop County who are overwhelmingly opposed to this ordinance. Common sense tells us that in a market with extremely limited supply of housing available for residential use at any price, pardon me, we have roofers on our roof at the moment. Every house that is licensed as a short-term rental investment property is a home or potential home that has been decisively removed from actual or potential residential use. The property is furthermore unlikely to return to residential use while the owners have every financial motive to maximize the profit from their business investments. This is a key reason why local governments in Oregon and around the country are moving to limit or ban short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. Some commissioners tend to speak in generalities about property rights, so I want to be really clear. Your actions today will likely determine whether my family or any other family in the future is able to lease our home in the years to come. The house next to Louis was until just a few years ago, a long-term rental that housed a veteran and longtime community member who was forced to move when new owners converted the house to an STR. If the county opens the floodgates to unlimited short-term rental licensing, this is also the likeliest fate of the home that we currently rent. Given the county's inability to deliver on increasing or preserving housing stock for residents, it's unlikely we'd find another home within 30 miles of here again at any price. We would not be the first family or the last to face displacement from a short-term rental conversion in Clatsop County. Meanwhile, the county has the highest rate of homelessness of any county in Oregon by a huge margin, twice the rate of the second highest county. We're also losing service workers, firefighters, teachers, nurses and other professionals who can't find, let alone afford, housing here. That's what makes it so shocking that the county would even be considering unrestricted licensing of short-term leases in residential neighborhoods. If the board chooses to ignore the planning commission and upends the county's residential zoning to allow STRs where they have previously been licensed illegally, a disastrous move that frankly, and I'm sure unintentionally reads like a hasty attempt to cover a clumsy and harmful error, I request that you move swiftly to place a reasonable cap on the number or percentage of short-term rental licenses in each community. This approach was supported unanimously by your planning commission. And while it is unpopular with investors and residents, capping STRs would at least offer a path for balancing this community's need for housing and livability concerns with the demands of investors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Commissioner Webb, was your hand up because of the audio? Yeah, she, she said they had roofers there that were so that's what that background noise was.
Oh, because it's been going on for a couple of people.
Yeah, it was background.
Same location.
Yeah, same.
Pounding, yeah.
No, no worries, no worries. Thank you. Clerk of the Board?
Yeah, let's go back to Jonathan Felix Lund.
Jonathan?
Thank you, sorry about that. Jonathan Felix Lund, 78986 Cove Beach Road in Archcade. I'll be quick. I've testified so many times, I've said so many things, but I really think this is an issue of property rights. You know, we purchased our home and it was, it had an SDR permit and we transferred that permit knowing that that was going to be a part of us being able to afford this home. And long-term, maybe we won't have to rent it out, but in the short-term, it's something that allows us to help pay the bills while we use it. And, you know, I've grown up in Oregon, I've grown up going to the coast my entire life and my parents grew up going to the coast. My grandparents had a house in Walport and it's a big part of kind of our family traditions. And this is the reason why we chose to purchase a house on the coast so that we could have some of those same traditions with our family. You know, I think homes have been rented for homestays on the coast for quite some time. And so I urge you to pass this ordinance 2205 to be consistent with the way things have already been used. A couple of facts about Cove Beach, because that's where I'm at, is I haven't met any investors or, you know, quote-unquote, business owners that people are being made out as. I have two businesses in Portland and this is not like running a business. People have these homes and they love, they love Cove Beach and they rent them out short-term and many people don't even rent them out very often. And they use it as much as they can. So there's not that many houses that are STRs. The numbers have continued to be inflated again and again and again. And people are talking about it as if they're out-of-state investors that are gobbling up homes and it's just not the case. Not to mention the fact that this community is primarily made up of part-time homeowners and most of the part-time homeowners that, you know, they're not out there very often. It's very, very quiet. So it is a little bit ironic to me that the place where we're getting the most complaints and everyone sees us the problem area of the county is also an area where it's probably the least likely to be a normal residential neighborhood. And if something happens where people cannot rent their homes as an STR, it's very, very, very unlikely they would convert those homes. They would probably use them for their friends and family. And so it would just become exclusionary and it would mean that only certain people had access to the coast in this area. So I urge you to, you know, protect property rights and be consistent with how these homes have been used in the past and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Felix Lund.
That's all the people who've signed up for.
I see that Denise Davis, I see that you've got your hand up and hopefully we can have you testify once again and hear you. So Denise? Denise Davis? I can't hear Denise. We might have some audio. I see Charles Dice has his hand up as well. Charles?
Yeah, so Denise had sent me an email saying that she was on the East Coast and might not be able to get a connect. And she asked if I could read her statement for her.
Uh, yeah, you can go ahead and do that.
Okay, so I don't have Denise's address, but I think she did give that early on and hopefully that's part of the record. Okay, so uh I don't have Denise's address, but I think she did give that early on, and hopefully that's part of the record. So the question is, if permitting STRs is legal um in these zones, why ordinance twenty-two oh five is even necessary? Why take such a drastic step? Why not simply continue to issue STR permit or permits? You have to see how damning this looks, that it seems you are covering your error in issuing these permits since twenty-eighteen. Because they were not, uh STRs were not permitted in this zone prior to twenty-eighteen, nor are they permitted now. The bottom line is that you've indicated that you'll be voting in favor of outside commercial entrance at the expense of the people you were supposed to represent. You are potentially ruining our neighborhoods to accommodate people who do not live here, at least not as primary residents. Your legacy will be based on a disregard of overwhelming evidence and on a distortion of facts which have polarized our communities, turning STR owners against full-time residents. How can we trust you to make balanced decisions regarding other issues in the county? We hope in this eleventh hour that you will reconsider and at least show the courage to attempt a compromise such as uh real caps, not this all-or-nothing destructive ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dice, reading uh testimony on behalf of Jeff and Denise Davis. Thank you.
Uh, I just heard Beth Radich. Did we want to see if she was available?
Yes, uh Beth Radich. Beth Radich?
Other than that, that's everyone.
Okay, that's everybody that signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone else that uh has joined us that would like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Any responses by staff?
Not sure.
Thank you, Community Development Director. We'll move on to discussion. So Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the question has been raised by Mr. Dice uh saying that I stand to uh to benefit financially because I live in um Falcon Cove Beach and could theoretically have a short-term rental. I want to put on the record, there is no conflict of interest. I have no plans to convert my home to be a short-term rental, for the record, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any further discussion from the members of the commission? And we've heard the presentation from our Community Development Director at the beginning of the hearing. Um, is there a motion at this time? Commissioner Toyoka?
Oh, thank you. Yes, with discussion, the item, actually not a motion. Uh, I said, we've heard the testimony, we got, we've received a lot more emails and letters and telephone calls as well, you know, before the uh the public hearing. It it seems like, you know, the obviously there are people polarized for and against, and then there's a lot of people in the middle ground. And I think the two overwhelming overwhelming things that I hear from the majority of the people are that um, you know, I know I'm a broken record, but code compliance, how it is enforced, and, you know, as far as the livability standards within the neighborhoods. So we having some consequence for a owner of a short-term rental when their tenant or their visitors do break the regulations, what is the consequence? There's nothing really written at this point, so that that needs to be addressed. Um, and I know we floated the idea of, you know, I I mentioned that maybe we shorten the term to a year of their life of the permits, and that actually additional revenue will provide a employee, full-time employee for the county for code employ- code enforcement of these short-term rentals, because that's one of the shortcomings. We have, you know, limitations on what the staff can do, and that would ensure that it would be self-funding to provide that enforcement. And again, that the other issue of uh the caps, we have to look at it and be, you know, where the limitations are appropriate and what would that cap be, because I can't imagine a standardized cap across the entire county. It's got to be, you know, different for different uh regions because of the capacity, because of those, this, you know, the how people are situated with homes, how the densities. So I believe those are the issues we should look at, and I open that for discussion with the rest of the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb?
Oh, thank you. Um, I um, I started out in this process um not being willing to vote um for this proposal until the cap issue had been addressed. Um, and I'm I I'm still very, very inclined to uh to keep that um, to keep that feeling, however, in the face of of a prob- probably being the only person on the commission who would do that, um it it might not be a constructive vote. Um, I would like us to state publicly, however, a commitment to address the cap issue. Um, and I would um, I I would also like to express uh the the board's willingness or commitment to extending the moratorium until that is done. Um, it's my understanding now that the moratorium ends in the end of Au- of August, and yet the staff tells us that um that it would take them six months uh to make a recommendation about how a cap system would work. Uh, and I I think we we owe all of the people who have who have spent so many hours um on this issue, I think we owe them a firm commitment um to doing that cap. Um, and um, and I do, uh, I I I would turn to council or or other staff to suggest how that might happen. Um, could we, for instance, tonight uh make a commitment to extend or ma- simply do a a moratorium that extended until December thirty-first? Uh, and work on the cap issue with a com- commitment to do it in as short a time as possible. Uh, and um, because I think we're, our staff is perfectly capable of of doing this work for us. Uh, and um, and I'd like to see the the commission make a commitment to get that done. Um, I'd also like to be able to for to have the staff bring forward um the work uh done on the good neighbor issues. Um, I've been working closely with the tourism uh community uh trying to come up with some both marketing and other materials that that are inside of hotel rooms and short-term rentals. Um, it being very frank about, fir- first of all, of our natural resource concerns and how to be a good a good citizen when you're visiting our county. Um, but also in terms of uh what we expect from people who come to enjoy our natural resources and what we think is their responsibility to do so as responsibly as possible. Um, so I um, I'm still not sure how I'm going to vote on this, but I would love li- if I would vote for it if the rest of the commission would would come up with a a commitment, a a commitment of time especially uh to solve this cap issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Banks and then Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Um, as was previously spoken and requested by staff, we would address the potential of direction for caps and so on and so forth after we have resolved um the ordinance situation that we have currently on our agenda and on our plate. So I will circle back to our agenda and I will circle back to um what we are to be discussing at the moment, and that is this ordinance, and I've looked at what is happening in Lincoln County uh most recently, actually over the last couple of years, and I see the struggle and I see the number of lawsuits that the county is facing in regards to um what has occurred in their county. And my goal tonight is to pull our county out of a precarious uh legal position. And also, I want to be transparent. Um, I am very adverse to removing property rights of our current STR owners. Um, property rights mean a lot to me. Uh, and to my constituents, I can't cherry pick when property rights are important and when they're not. Therefore, you know, I wish to protect their rights despite, you know, this topic is very difficult for me. I'm not a a huge fan of of, you know, the impacts of tourism, the negative impacts of tourism that can happen and occur in our county, and that's a conversation for another day. Um, and one that we've often discussed is our capacity issues. Um, but uh, out of respect for Commissioner Thompson, I will uh give her a moment to have her comments and then move for a motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, colleagues. Was, it's ironic because I ran for election of the Clatsop County, well, first of all, I got myself appointed with the uh agreement of the County Board of Commissioners to the Planning Commission, because I wanted to do something about tran- the transient occupancy. I ran for election of the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners because I still wanted to do something about transient occupancy. Well, and here we are doing something about transient occupancy. What we are doing is addressing in law what has been a matter of fact since long before any of us were here. And we're doing that by passing ordinance twenty-two dash zero five, because we are putting it where it belongs in our county ordinance. I think that's important to notice. I had a great growth curve of learning experience of how to deal with change in my neighborhood. And what I see is, Commissioner Toyoka, I think I may disagree with you on this one. You're talking about code enforcement. Our code compliance people are looking for compliance. They're looking to educate and get people acting properly, not to punish people. And what I see too often in my neighborhood is picking certain neighbors of whatever part-time, full-time, anybody I don't like, I get to punish them. And I see that dynamic too much in play. So what I want to see, yes, neighborhood livability sustained. I'm in agreement on that, always have been. Code compliance, consequences on both side of it. I've also been looking uh up and down the coast, and and what I heard about Telemont County is those good neighbor agreements apply to both the residents and the renters. I mean, this this issue of respect and free access regardless of wealth based on being well-behaved, that's what it boils down to. So I think we want to head in those directions where we're looking for education. We're looking for a return to civil discourse in our neighborhoods, and I hope that if we pass ordinance twenty-two dash zero five, we'll take a solid, firm step in that direction. So I'm for that. I also see um the advisability of investigating caps, when, where, how much, all of those kinds of issues. I want to pass this ordinance tonight so we can close it so that we can heal, so that we can move on and really address the underlying issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Uh, Commissioner Banks?
Um, so before I make a motion, I just wanted to make a comment of, we have over a hundred um STRs in unincorporated Clatsop County. And without approving this ordinance, the second that we pull out of a moratorium, uh it is under my understanding that they would no longer be allowed to operate. And so with that in mind, and with my drive to protect property rights, um, I move to approve ordinance twenty-two oh five and conduct the second reading by title only.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, move and second to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero five, conduct second reading by title only. Uh, before we go to a vote, do we have any further discussion? Commissioner Webb?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Um, could could Commissioner Banks clarify what she just said, because I it wasn't my understanding of what is going to happen. So.
It was pretty clear.
I'm sorry, it wasn't clear because I didn't understand it. Um, I just, I would like you to say it again.
Right, right now, we just have the ordinance twenty-two dash zero five that's up for the vote, and so any direction, I think, would be beyond that. Um, and we could tackle that right after, correct? County Manager?
Well, uh, it just seems to me that when a county commissioner makes a statement that is basically not true, that we need to clarify that for for our constituents.
Chair, members of the board, um if I might, um and I'll have Jo- Joanna weigh in um as well if she'd like, but I I think that we at at the staff level understand that the board is interested in having staff work on on caps. Um, and so since this is a new um topic for us, what I would suggest is as part of the motion is to direct staff, so if you are going to move to adopt the ordinance, is to also direct staff to come back to your board, and we could say um during a work session in three weeks, so that we can put together a plan and a timeline on how staff would approach that work. And then at that point, part of the assessment uh um on the moratorium would be included so that we can look at, you know, at the calendar, look at all the inputs and the outputs, and make sure we understand whether it's a six-month process, a four-month process, a three-month process, and then when that point of decision-making is on the extension of the moratorium. I just think right now we haven't done all of that legwork, and so if it's the um if it is desired by the board to have us move forward and to and to state what that intention is, um one option is to just extend the motion to just give staff direction to return with that plan on how to address caps. And then we would come back in that timeframe, lay out what the process is and the timeline, so that the board and the public can have um eyes on what we see that looking at and have input. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. I see County Council would like to add.
Uh, Chair and members of the board, thank you. Um, I would just like to add um that there are some procedural hoops that we have to go through to actually extend the moratorium, including giving notice to the state, um providing um an opportunity for a hearing. Uh, so, you know, when we come back with the work session, having a plan um to figure out what um if all um could be some zones or all zones would be subject to a moratorium, I think that would be helpful to have um that thoughtful process of staff evaluating what that procedure could look like. Um, but most certainly, um Chair and Board, we hear you um about the caps and and would like to be responsive.
Thank you, County Council. Uh, before I go to Commissioner Banks, uh Community Development Director Hendrickson, I'd like to.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I wanted to confirm first of all, what County Council said, that we do have a fourteen-day minimum requirement notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Um, and also that uh as part of your motion, if you're looking to put a timeframe on when you want staff to return, uh if we could please have longer than three weeks, in order to make that deadline, we would have to submit all of our information uh next Wednesday to the Clerk of the Board to put the agenda together. Um, ideally, at least a month, maybe five weeks would be preferred if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Commissioner Banks?
I move to amend the main motion to direct staff to explore uh caps and and limitations uh moving forward, and then to circle back with the board and further converse uh post haste, as Gail Hendrickson has pointed out, more than five weeks from now, if I if I have been correct in hearing.
I second that motion.
I second that motion. No, I'm, I'm the seconder. I get to say whether she gets to amend it. That's my understanding of parliamentary procedure.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. And I agree.
Okay, moved in second and we're okay with the amended motion then, County Council. Everybody's clear on what we've, okay. What we've moved in place. So we're going to be, uh, approving ordinance twenty-two dash zero five. Uh, we're going to direct staff to come back with recommendations um, and a plan for reviewing caps, and this will be done within the next five weeks. Is that correct?
I think.
County Manager?
Sorry, Chair, members of the board. Yes, I think, I just want to be clear that what staff will be presenting is, is the plan and the timeline for, for then evaluating um, caps. And so that would give us time to kind of lay out the timeline that can factor in all of those things that County Council and Gail have mentioned regarding requirements, um, public hearing notices and and all the such. And I think Gail's point is, is a good one. If we look at, 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 at five weeks out, that'll probably give us enough time to just put that together. And then once that plan is approved by your board, then that will kickstart the actual process in earnest. So.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. So we will move to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero five. Uh, direct, uh, Community Development Director to come back with a plan to evaluate caps uh, within five weeks or around five weeks. That sound correct? Okay. We'll go ahead and, and go for a vote. All those in favor signify with an I.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, Council, will you read the ordinance by title only?
An ordinance adopting amendments to the Clatsop County Land and Water Development and use code Article Four zoning regulations to address short-term rentals.
Thank you very much, County Council. Thank you very much, uh, to all of those that have testified. I know that, that you've, uh, we've had a number of people that have testified at multiple public hearings and thank you for your time and thank you for the staff's time, uh, our Community Development Director Hendrickson. I, I know that, uh, please pass along to your entire staff how much we appreciate the hard work and continued hard work. This is not done, so we will be continuing uh, to review STRs and I do appreciate, uh, everyone's dedication to this and thank you, County Manager. We'll move on to the business agenda this evening, which is adopt proposed fee schedule for Clatsop County to be implemented on July first, twenty-twenty-two. That's on page two-ten of our agenda. And, uh, Jennifer Carlson, our Budget Officer, is here and I'll let, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. Um, tonight I asked that you allow for public comment and following public comment. Um, that you adopt the proposed fee schedule to become effective July first, twenty-twenty-two. The proposed fee schedule is for a number of departments. And the need for the adjustments within each department is a result of a departmental evaluation of the existing fees and services. Um, the proposed fees, fee additions, deletions, increases or decreases reflected starting on page two-thirteen in red on the fee schedule. Um, are there any questions?
Any questions this time? Okay. Not seeing any. Um, so we'll have to take public comment at this time, correct? I'll go ahead and open it up. Um, do we have anyone uh, that would like to speak on the proposed fee schedule? If you can just raise your hand or go ahead and unmute. Not seeing or hearing anything, we'll go ahead then and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective July first, twenty-twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Move and second that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective July first, twenty-twenty-two as presented. All those in favor signify with an I.
I.
I. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, Jennifer. We'll move on to the next item, which is a large county road event application for the twenty-twenty-two Hood to Coast Portland to Coast Relays. Page two-thirty-seven of our agenda and Senior Planner Ian Sisson.
Thank you, Chair Quila, members of the board. As Chair Quila mentioned, this is an application for a major county road event permit for this year's Hood to Coast event. Uh, if approved, this would be the fortieth running of that race through Clatsop County. And with the exception of two thousand twenty, uh, when the event was canceled because of the pandemic, um, the county has permitted the Hood to Coast event annually under the County Road Event Ordinance, which is included in your agenda packet today. The event is proposed to happen August twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh. And the route map can be found as well, uh, as attached, be in your packet. The recommended conditions of approval are included as attachment C, and those are uh, basically the same as last year. As far as the request from your board tonight, general approval of the application as well as a fee reimbursement request, that reimbursement goes to the various agencies, uh, mostly our rural fire department, um, rural fire districts, uh, to reimburse those, those expenses that they incur, uh, facilitating this event. So that amount this year is projected to be thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars. And then following the event, we'll collect actual, uh, expense reports and reimburse those agencies for their actual expenses. So, uh, again, the request this evening is to approve that application as well as the reimbursement amount. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank, thank you, Senior Planner, Sisson. I see that Commissioner Banks has a question.
I was curious if anybody from Hood Coast is here this evening?
I did talk to Felicia Huber. She is the Race Director. And, uh, she had indicated that she'd be able to make it. I looked at the attendee list and I didn't see her name. Um, I did see some unidentified phone numbers, so I'm not sure if she's one of those.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and open it up if, uh, anybody from Hood to Coast is here. Do we have anybody from Hood to Coast? Okay, not seeing or hearing. Go ahead, Commissioner Banks.
I just want to, um, I'm still a little bit salty about last year, uh, in regards to how Hood to Coast operated. Um, we had been promised that there would be no party. We had been promised actually a lot of things that would have, you know, followed our COVID, COVID protocol a little bit closer than what actually occurred in Seaside. And, and so I just wanted to express that, um, that, that was just, hmm. Uh, I, I just, I just don't appreciate when, when an entity has made, um, promises that they don't follow through on, I guess. And I know that we aren't the only entity that they have discussions with regarding, uh, the processes of Hood to Coast. And I just, I guess I wanted to express my, my, my frustration um, that that what they promised to us, uh, did not actually occur. And so especially when at that time in our community, we were under stringent regulations regarding, um, our restaurants and, and so many things that, uh, greatly impacted our community. It felt a little disrespectful. So anyhow, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Toyoka?
Thank you. Just a question for Ian. Uh, you know, large document, but I was just trying to see the reimbursement side. Was there anywhere for rural law? Were they receiving anything?
Uh, the Sheriff's Office, I believe, did provide a reimbursement amount. Let's see, that's Exhibit D. I don't have the number right in front of me, but, but we do, uh, re-in, reimburse the, the Sheriff's Department annually.
Okay, I just couldn't see if I didn't, just wanted to make sure rural law was getting reimbursed and extended. They have a very active part. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Oh, it's a tongue-in-cheek comment. Um, the, kind of the standing joke among the voluntary emergency preparedness people is that the Hood to Coast at no extra charge to us will provide us with a simulation of a planned catastrophic event for us to manage to hone our skills. So, uh, I'm glad we're getting money from it. I understand there are concerns. I've raised some myself before, but, you know, on the other hand, we do get to practice essential skills and, um, we do get some money, so.
So. Go ahead.
Are you looking for a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve the County Road Event Application for the twenty-twenty-two Hood to Coast Portland to Coast Relays as submitted with the staff recommended conditions of approval listed in Exhibit C and deposit amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars.
Second. Move and second to approve the County Road Event Application for the twenty-twenty-two Hood to Coast Portland to Coast Relays as submitted with the staff recommended conditions of approval listed in Exhibit C and deposit amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars. All those in favor signify with an I?
I.
I. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. I, I think that some of the, uh, I, I think, um, observations and hesitations, it probably would be a good idea to debrief after the event and, and have this, uh, again, uh, so that it's fresh in our minds. We could probably talk about it and then bring the Hood to Coast, uh, um, folks here and, and, and maybe discuss some of these issues with them because, you know, oftentimes it comes up, you know, a year after and it's not exactly, um, you know, as clear as it is when it's, uh, just happened. And, and it might be a nice, nice idea to kind of do a debrief afterwards. Senior Planner Sisson?
Thank you, Chair Quila. I've written that down and I also, I, I hear, um, some of the concerns that were shared this evening. Um, and, and definitely acknowledge those because what, what you're being presented, um, is, is the information that you vote based upon. And so, uh, I, I hear you there. I also want to just acknowledge that the, the COVID protocols were included in the conditions of approval. And I know that the way that I have crafted that last year and this year was just that the, the event followed the, the latest and greatest COVID protocols and those, as we all know, were consistently in flux. Um, and then the, the other thing that I just want to point out, and I'm sure you all are well aware of this, is um, the, the ordinance that we have that requires this permit applies only to the use of county roads. And so, uh, what happens at the finish line in the city of Seaside really isn't part of, part of the jurisdiction. But again, I acknowledge that you're, you're making decisions based off of the whole packet of information that you're given. Um, so I, I hear you on that. And, um, finally, I just wanted to point out for the record, the, the reimbursement amount, uh, request for the Sheriff's Office this year is twelve thousand one hundred dollars. And that's, uh, based on a reimbursement amount last year of twelve thousand forty-five dollars and eighty, eighty-two cents. So, thank you again, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your, uh, your work on this. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the Planning Commission Appointments on page three oh two. I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Gail Hendrickson.
Thank you again, Chair and Board. Uh, this evening, we, you are considering the appointment of three new planning commissioners potentially. We have three terms that are expiring on June thirtieth of this year. Uh, those are the terms of Nadia Gardner, John Orr, and Lam Kwong. Uh, Mr. Kwong has submitted an application to be considered for reappointment. Ms. Gardner and Mr. Orr did not reapply. Uh, based on the applications and the advertisement that we received, we received a total of eight applications. Your board conducted interviews with the applicants who were able to attend on May twenty-third. And the appointments that you make, uh, this evening would begin on July first. The eight applicants, uh, come from a variety of districts throughout the county and they are listed here. It's Brian Allen, Jeremy Linder, Michael Magyar, Daniel Penley, Katie Pritchard, Lam Kwong, Jennifer Rasmussen, and Jackson Ross. Our existing planning commission bylaws do have some limitations on the characteristics of the members that your board would appoint to the planning commission. Uh, so one of those caveats is that no more than two of our planning commissioners can reside in an incorporated community. And so currently, uh, we have John Orr, who has not applied for reappointment. And we have Chris Farrar, who are both in incorporated areas, both in Astoria. Uh, we do also have, uh, three, two, sorry, yeah, three applicants who are applying from incorporated areas. So if your board wanted to make two appointments of incorporated people from the list of names in front of you this evening, then, uh, Mr. Farrar's appointment would either have to be terminated or we would have to revise the bylaws before we could have three members from incorporated areas. There are also some limitations that are placed on your board with regard to planning commission appointments. And those are stated in Oregon Revised Statutes or ORS two fifteen point zero three zero subsection five. And that subsection of state statute prohibits or limits, uh, planning commission members to be limited to two members that are involved in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate or that have the same type of occupation, business, trade, or profession. And so currently, we have two members on our planning commission, Carrie Johnson and Jason Croucher, who lists their occupation as general contact contractor and general construction contractor. Uh, we also have one applicant and that's Mr. Allen, who also lists his occupation as a general contractor. Uh, if you wanted to appoint, uh, Mr. Allen this evening, then either Mr. Johnson or Mr. Croucher's, uh, appointment would have to be terminated. And we cannot just change our bylaws because of this is coming out of state statute. Uh, we are recommending that your board appoint three applicants this evening to the planning commission, uh, to fill terms that would expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Um, Director Hendrickson, my recollection is that earlier at a work session or a board meeting, I can't remember which right now, that, that we had come to general consensus on supporting the appointment of Michael Magyar and Katie Pritchard. And that we were looking for the, the third of, the third vacancy to be filled from, from the pool of applicants. Is that accurate?
Yes, based on your discussions that you're, following your interview, or it may have been the last work session. Yeah, that was the general consensus, uh, was that at that time, the board was leaning towards specific candidates. But was undecided about the reappointment of Commissioner, uh, Lam Kwong.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Uh, Commissioner Banks?
Um, for that third position, I would like to speak in favor of Jeremy Linder, uh, with his farming expertise and his business expertise that he can bring to the table. Um, and also his thoughtfulness. I, I know him well. He is an extremely thoughtful man. And I think that he would be able to bring a lot to, to the discussions in the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, there was not general consensus, um, at, at our discussion in work session. Um, I oppose the appointment of Katie Pritchard. Um, and, um, I support Mike Magyar. Uh, and I'd like to reappoint Lam Kwong as well. Um, I'd like to know, um, to what Jerem, Jeremy Linder's small business is.
He manages ag bag out of Lewis and Clark, and he is also a farmer rancher.
Okay, okay, good, good. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I'll go to Commissioner To, Commissioner Thompson, but perhaps, uh, the, the way to do this might be to do one at a time uh, appointments. So, um, I'll go ahead and, and we can discuss further. But when it comes to actually, uh, making these appointments, I think we should do it, uh, uh, by, by position. So we can go ahead and do one at a time. Commissioner Toyoka? You're, you're muted, John.
Sorry about that. Uh, so that was actually my.
Sorry about that. So that was actually my statement, Commissioner, Chair Quila, is that we go one by one and just fill the positions individually instead of a slate. I think that would be much easier.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, okay then, I will nominate Mike Magyar to sit on the planning commission.
I will second that.
Move and second to appoint Mike Magyar to the planning commission. All those in favor signify with an eye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And then next? We have a motion? Commissioner Banks?
I move to appoint Katie Pritchard.
Second?
That move and second to appoint Katie Pritchard to the planning commission. And for, and all those in favor signify with an eye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we want to have a roll call board, board vote, clerk of the board?
Chair Quila?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Trioka?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Okay, and I see Commissioner Banks, you have your hand up still?
For the third motion.
Okay, Commissioner.
I move to appoint Jeremy Linder.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to appoint Jeremy Linder to the planning commission. All those in favor signify with an, excuse me, any further discussion? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I, I guess because of the way we're doing this, I'm sorry, I, I actually think this, it would have been better to do a ranked choice vote in this, because now we are at the point where it appears to me that we are not renominating Lam Kwong. Is, is that my understanding?
Yeah, that would be correct.
Yeah, I, I think this is not a good way to elect people to, to the board. I, I think that some kind of ranked choice voting ought to be, ought to be done. And it saddens me that, that we have to have the two urban appointments to be both from the same city. I think that's, I think that's too bad. But it.
Okay, yeah, thank you Commissioner. We have any further discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Signify with an eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Clerk of the board, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Quila?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Trioka?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Well, excuse me, are, are we voting on Jeremy Linder? Is that what the?
Correct, yeah. Yes, I should have clarified. Yes, it was moved and seconded to Jer, to appoint Jeremy Linder to the planning commission. And that is what the vote is. The vote is to approve Jeremy Linder.
Okay. Um, aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
So, so that was unanimous, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So as, as we voted, we, we've appointed Mike Magyar, Katie Pritchard and Jeremy Linder to the planning commission. Commissioner Banks?
I just wanted to make a comment of the fact that I really appreciate Lam Kwong's participation and volunteer spirit and that I hope that he reapplies. I, I appreciate folks that are willing to be a part of this process. And so I hope that he continues.
Yeah, Commissioner Banks, I completely agree with you. I really appreciated getting to know him during our joint sessions and I think Lam Kwong did bring a, a good perspective to our planning commission. So completely agree with your sentiment there. And I also would say, I really thought our interview process was a very great way to get to know some of these applicants better and ask them the questions that are important to us and just felt that all of these nominees did a, did a fabulous job and accounted for themselves very well. So any one of these individuals could be very good planning commissioners. So Commissioner Trioka?
Oh, I learned that because you just said, but I was gonna just state that I appreciate every single applicant and, you know, their, their quest for public service and to help their fellow, you know, member of this community here. Lam Kwong, I mean, I listened to him in the planning sessions and in the meetings, very thoughtful, very considerate gentleman. And I sure hope he, he still has that public service heart and will participate in a different committee or council somewhere in the community because his, his voice is very reasonable and he brings a lot of sound judgment. So I really appreciate him and hope he does continue somewhere else.
Thank you Commissioner Trioka. Commissioner Thompson?
Agreed. So Lam Kwong, extremely helpful to have that diversity of opinion and that artist's point of view. Really want to see him stay involved. I also want to have other people stay involved, especially those folks who are broadband experts. So let me put in a pitch for that as well. We, I'm hopeful that with our community engagement effort with a new public affairs person, we're going to be able to take more, take better use of the richness of our community input. So wishing for that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments? On this item? Commissioner Banks?
Sorry, one more comment. This was a really full application stack that we were able to sort through. And I really hope folks like, and I can bring Brian Allen to the top of my mind, just because he is a, another contractor. So I really wish folks would keep their applications open. We'll be circling back in another year. And so, yeah, I, it was a really healthy showing for applicants and I, I want that to continue for us. So thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Banks. Any other discussion? Again, thank you and Community Development Director Hendrickson can pass along our gratitude for, for all that participated in the process and thank you for the good discussion. We'll move on to the next item, which is the North Coast Business Park Purchase Sale Agreement on page 321. And our Assistant County Manager Monica Steele is here to present on this. Monica?
Good evening Commissioners. In January of 2022, staff put out a request for proposals for the development of the North Coast Business Park and that RFP closed on March 17th. The county received one proposal from Atlin Investments. And staff came before your board during executive session to discuss the proposal that we received. And based on the direction, we began negotiations with Atlin. In summary, what has been offered or proposed is a sale price of 1.3 million with earnest money in the amount of $60,000. The contingency period would be for 180 days after the effective date of the purchase sale agreement being signed. The purchaser shall have six options to extend the contingency period for a period of 90 days each. Each extension would come at a $10,000 amount that is non-refundable, but would go towards the purchase price if applicable. If the sale goes through. The closing date would be 60 days after the expiration of the contingency period. And any costs of, and fees would be deducted from the 1.3 million dollars and the revenues would be deposited back into the industrial revolving fund. And I have, I'm open for questions, but staff is requesting that your board approve the purchase sale agreement between Clatsop County and Atlin Investments and authorize the county manager to sign.
Thank you Monica. Any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
I just have a comment. I really can't say too much in praise of the efforts by staff. This has been a gnarly issue. Not quite 100 years, but doesn't it seem as though it has been? And the detail of the application helped me understand the difficulty. It helped me understand Terry Hendricks' comment, the longer we let this go, the less land we have. So good for moving forward. As I looked at the map, I wondered at one point, we had hoped to locate some county offices on this. Do I remember that correctly? Was it on this parcel?
Um, there, there have been a lot of iterations for the development of this land and there was a point in time that we had talked about it, as well as most recently, it was a suggested site for the public works facility, but because of the mitigation costs, that was something that we did not move forward on.
You know, that would have been lovely, but I see where it wouldn't have worked. I really, my compliments to you. I actually think I understand what's going on here and support what you've put forward for us. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions, comments? We don't have any. Do we have a motion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase sale agreement between Clatsop County and Atlin Investments, Inc. and authorize the county manager to sign.
I second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the purchase sale agreement between Clatsop County and Atlin Investments and authorize the county manager to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Fantastic work. Thank you very much Monica. And this has been a an issue that people have been dealing with for years and, and we're so glad to be moving forward and making progress. So thank you. Next is the Childcare Advisory Group Recommendations. We've got some members of the task force, Eva Mand, Eva Manderson, and I think Dan Gaffney are both here. Thank you for staying with us here. I know that it's been a long evening, but we appreciate you being here to answer any questions. We had a presentation at our work session last week about the proposal for childcare and childcare task force recommendations going forward. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Eva to describe any more on that and then answer any questions that we might have. Eva?
Thank you Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here again with you tonight. And we just wanted recognize the amount of work that you've put in tonight. And I know that you have all seen this proposal already. So I thought we would stay pretty high level and just give you a chance to ask questions. This proposal is to establish a grant fund and really focused on retaining existing childcare and then also looking at expansion for childcare programs in Clatsop County. The proposal would bring forward a part-time program manager to oversee the grant funds. They would, they would be bringing in funds as well as helping to disperse funds to childcare programs. Programs participating in this would be working on stabilizing their business practices with Clatsop Community Colleges Small Business Development Center and also with support from the Childcare Resource and Referral Agency. And the proposal would be kicked off by county funds and in support of this project. And then also we have some I believe secured funding from other partners. And then our, our program manager would also be looking for continued funding. So really not looking at this as a one and done, but a continuing project that would support Clatsop County childcare providers into the future. And so with that really high level summary, are there questions that Dan or I can, can answer for all of you?
Thank you Eva. And I failed to mention that you're the Regional Childcare Resource and Referral Director for Northwest Education Service District. So thank you Eva for being here. And then Dan Gaffney, of course, is a longtime educator. He's really been a instrumental piece of this task force and, and working diligently for years on preschool and, and early childhood education. So thank you both Eva and Dan for being here. Any questions for either Commissioner Banks?
I don't have any questions and I was going to allow my other commissioners if they have any before asking if I could make this motion.
I think that Commissioner Webb, you had a question, right? Question, question or comment?
I have a comment. I, I think, I think this was such a cool thing that happened. You know, we, we put into our strategic planning a lot of things that say, oh, we want to do this. And, and this was an occasion where we really did do this. And it was fast and it was so mature by the time it got to us. I, I, it saddens me that on the same evening that we've heard that the Jule broadband initiative has kind of lagged a bit. This is such an inspiration because this was a case where a couple of commissioners were involved and it just went forward and came back so substantively in such a short period of time. This is, I think, one of the big crises facing our families right now. And as the grandmother of four children under four with, with two children with, whose spouses are all working full-time. I get this. And I hear it just from so many, so many people. So thank you so much for the work that you did. Let's remember how this happened. It's a good model for perhaps how we can address issues like this in the future. So thank you so much. This is, this is just a terrific effort. Thanks so much.
Thank you Commissioner. You have a lot of really hardworking community leaders that brought this together and I Dan being one of them and a lot of connect the dots. And I think it's definitely something to be proud of and something to for me to take and share and brag about to Tillamook and Columbia County too, hoping that they can pull some things together and, and do similar.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Webb, your points are well taken. I think that's excellent assessment. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. So Dan Gaffney, your humility and perseverance are such, yeah, I know it's always team, but somehow Dan's always there. Eva's always there. So, so for sticking with it when it didn't look possible and, and carrying it on. So it is both visionary and practical, which makes it pragmatic a success. We hope it's a model. And by the way, Jule is just faltering. It's not, it's not dead yet. We're hoping, you know, don't don't count Jule out ever, ever, ever. But, but Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Quila, your work on this is so inspiring, so effective. Hooray, hooray. Well done, well done. Commissioner Banks, are you gonna, are you gonna move us home?
I am. I just wanted to leave with a comment first. Eva and Dan and the rest of the committee did a lot of heavy lifting. They tolerated my crazy schedule. They took some weird drawings of mine and, and crafted what I feel is, is, is hope for our future. And with Commissioner Quila's hospital connections and his, his experience with Little Sprouts and like everyone. Jonah through the city of Astoria, and I wish I could pull all of the names out of my head who have really flexed their muscles and their brains in order to accomplish this. And so I'm very happy to move to accept the program proposal of the childcare advisory group and direct staff to negotiate an MOU with Coal Pack as the program's fiscal agent. The MOU will be considered by the board at a future business meeting.
I second.
I second that.
Right, I second, great. All right. It's been moved and seconded to accept the program proposal of the childcare advisory group and direct staff to negotiate an MOU with Coal Pack as the program's fiscal agent. The MOU will be considered by the board at a future business meeting, probably early July. So all those in favor signify with an eye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much Eva and Dan. Thanks for all your hard work and and now it's time to get, get started. So
It's good stuff.
Dan, would you like to say something?
I just want to say real quick that, that Eva hit the nail on the head when she mentioned connect the dots because this is because this has been something that, at least I've been aware of for the last ten years. And so it's been a big, heavy lift, and there's a whole lot more work to do. So I appreciate the county taking the lead and putting forth some opportunity for some funds. We're excited to have funds coming in from both of our hospitals and and other entities as well. So thank you so much. We look forward to more leadership like this from you folks. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Eva. Thank you, everyone. We'll go ahead and open it up for anything for the good of the order, any items for the good of the order this evening? Commissioner Banks?
I just have one, and that's, you know, in regards to how we treat each other in public meetings, and that we continue to do so with respect to each other as colleagues. I think that that is at the forefront of my mind tonight.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I'm hearing an awful lot about the fact that we are one of the few deliberative bodies in Clatsop County who are not meeting in person. And I think that that has raised some concerns among our constituents that we are not willing to show our faces and and to face people one-to-one. So I would really love to encourage us, since we do have a meeting place that is highly well, it's very well organized, it's very conducive to hybrid meetings, which I hope we're gonna be. I think actually that's part of our board rules now, right? That our meetings are always going to be hybrid. And I would just like to encourage the fact that I really think it's time for us to come back together. We all know that that the, what Commissioner Banks is asking for or is promoting is done most effectively when we're all in the same room, and when we can greet each other and ask about the kids and the grandkids and how things are going. So I really hope that we can do that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I think this is good. Will we be able to, as a board, next month, get back to at least our regular meetings being in person?
County manager.
It's our last county manager.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chair Quila, I was looking at my calendar. So these calendars actually come in really handy, I have to say. So the next meeting, regular business meeting in July will be July thirteenth, and there is no work session, so it is just the regular board meeting. So if your board would like, we can, we can implement the hybrid model on the thirteenth. And for those that are available, we will be down in the Boynton, and those that want to join remotely, that's an option as well, and certainly for the public, it's an option to be present or to be hybrid. So if it, if it's the will of your board staff, well, we will focus on July thirteenth as that.
How do we all feel about that? Everybody feel good about that? I, I think that there is a, with the work sessions being virtual, I think that that's something I'd like to continue because it certainly makes it nice for more people to join us, and then also during the middle of the workday, it's, it's, it's much more convenient for me. But yes, I think our regular meetings is something we've been trying to get back to an in-person meeting, and I think that that, you know, if we can do it in July, I think fantastic. Commissioner Banks?
I just wanted to concur with you. When our work sessions fall in the middle of the day, it's always easier for me to do it from school versus having to drive in. I lose an hour both ways. And so, or a half hour on either side of that from the kids. And so I appreciate being able to continue the distance work session. But yes, I'm all for meeting in person, so it'll be my actual first time.
That's right, that's right.
So Chair, we will work on the thirteenth as the first day.
Thank you, County Manager. Any other items for the good of the order? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of your evening. We'll see you soon.